I better start over again because my mic wasn't on. Welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session, June 8th, 2022, 9 o'clock a.m. Hydrate Meeting, Assessable in Person via Zoom. Item number one, Holton Lake Level Resolution, Stacy Hissong. Stacy's out there in Zoom, so I'm going to call on her at this time. I'm assuming she's going to talk about motion number one on a regular meeting.
Yes, thank you and good morning. So we discussed this last work session. And basically what this is, is a resolution recognizing that we're moving forward with the petition to establish the boundaries of the Special Assessment District. And that is already in place. We already have the resolution for that. But during the meeting with the township supervisors and assessors, there was a suggestion based on input that they received that the lake level itself be analyzed. And so to provide transparency to the property owners as they are going through the special assessment boundary process, we thought it would be advisable for the board to pass a resolution to study that once the lake level assessment district is established so that property owners are assured that this will be looked at. We just aren't going, we just need to set the special assessment. So that's what this resolution does.
Right, correct. And that's the way I understand it and that's the way I read it. You know, since we're going through this process, it makes perfect sense to get this done at the same time. So any commissioners have any questions about Stacy? I know it was on two weeks ago. We had a great discussion then on it. Do we need to have longer on this and we're ready to move?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Stacy, I appreciate your comments. Yeah, transparency suggested from not only from township officials, but from the public are greatly appreciated.
Okay, Stacy, I don't think anybody else has any questions in this regard. So we will, and this is on for our agenda to be voted on today. So this is essentially, I look at this as step number two, correct?
Yes, yes. So step number one is getting the boundaries of the Special Assessment District correct. And there will be a court hearing later on this year, hopefully later on this summer, depending on the schedule of the court and how we're getting information along as to what properties will be part of the Special Assessment District. And then that step two is getting a study together to evaluate the court ordered lake level and to get it language that's more consistent with the Higgins Lake Court of Appeals case.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number two. Thank you. All right, MSU Extension 2020-2021 Annual Report. And I look at my thing here, it says Julie Darden, District Four Director. Is that correct?
It is, yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to express my appreciation to the Board of Commissioners and the County Administrator Controller for the time and space to share our annual report with you all for MSU Extension. As you're aware, the last two years have presented challenges for our staff and for the public. And we have with your support continued to offer learning opportunities for the residents of Roscommon County. This report is really focusing on the calendar year of 2021. Although because of grants and other things, some of our impact statements will have different grant years. For example, the 4H year begins in August. It runs concurrent with the school year. And our nutrition programs, because they're federally supported by grants, the grant year begins in October and ends in September. So there's some, it's not all perfect in terms of the calendar. But in 2021, MSU Extension connected to 4,626 residents in Roscommon County. Our 4H programs, which were largely for the first half of the year delivered remotely, engaged 110 youths to learn lifelong skills and continue to grow. New clubs and opportunities have begun this year. One of which includes a story walk in partnership with the Intermediate School District, the Core ISD, encouraging literacy. And that's an opportunity that I believe is in Holton Lake. And youth who complete the story walk, it's a pathway where story pages are laminated and on posts and families can walk along and read the story. And at the end of that walk, if they scan a QR code and complete our survey, they can get a free book for each kid, which is exciting. So we're doing innovative programs and partnerships like that. Our youth programs focus on a wide array of areas, including leadership development for youth, civic engagement, cultural competency, career exploration, workforce preparation, STEM skills that help kids understand the future of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and in many cases, art is included in that as well. And Roscommon in 2021, and 2020 and 2021, saw the creation of a 4H council, which includes youth and adults working together to increase the presence and success of 4H programs in Roscommon County. And we're really excited that we have a strong cadre of youth who are involved in that board because we feel that it's very important for youth to have a voice in the programming that they are engaged with. Our health and nutrition programming has been delivered both virtually and in person as we're able to meet the needs of people across the lifespan, including social and emotional education. We had 112 residents who access programming, including learning opportunities for caregivers, emotional management programs with examples like Relax Alternatives to Anger or Stress Less with Mindfulness, which teaches people skills where they can use mindfulness practices to reduce the stress that they're experiencing in their life. And that has ripple effects on the rest of their health, their family, and the community for the better. And we have programs that support lifelong wellness, like Tai Chi for arthritis and falls prevention, which we have delivered both virtually and in person with instructor who leads people through gentle movement that can help strengthen them. And it's a very, very popular program. In fact, we have begun doing Train the Trainer opportunities because we have more demand than we have time for our staff to deliver that. And our nutrition programs reached 130 people. And we're acting as the lead agency in Roscommon County for the Market Fresh Program, which connected 130 residents to a program for older adults that offers them coupons that they can use to buy fresh Michigan grown fruits and vegetables. We're very proud to be involved in a program like that where the priority is being put to help people improve their nutrition, but also put some money in the pockets of Michigan growers and producers. And we're continuing to partner with community programs. One of the examples in the report, in the printed report, is the Roscommon County Food Pantry, which was able to add a milk cooler that will allow the pantry to safely store and share dairy products with community residents, further rounding out the diet of people who need to access food through food pantries. I've also given Commissioner Muckenthaler a copy of our statewide impact report. Just one copy because I didn't think you'd all want another copy of a thing. But if you'd like an extra copy, that's our statewide impact. It talks about what our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Education Programs do. And we have examples of programs everywhere from working with kids in schools to help them understand how they can eat healthy and be active, all the way up to working with people living alone who need to cook for one or two. And maybe they're used to cooking for a large family and now they need to scale back, not only to save money, but also so that they're not tempted by leftovers or having larger portions than they need. And to that end, I've offered you a sample of one of our recipes and a recipe card for cherry oatmeal energy snacks. Elaine Palm, who is with us virtually, told me that this is a recipe that she has made with youth participants, teen participants in our Teen Cuisine Program. And on the back of the recipe card, you have all the nutrition facts. You have half of that serving. So just in case you're looking at it and thinking, oh, that's a lot. It's only half a serving. And this is the kind of information that we offer people who are in our classes. And we're teaching the skills related to how individuals can cook for themselves. Really excited to have youth aging out of foster care, youth and adults with developmental challenges. We try to serve the entire population with our programs. You're very familiar with Julie Crick, who is a natural resources educator here in Roscommon County. And there's a larger team behind Julie that works on natural resources. And residents from Roscommon County took advantage of our natural resources programming to learn about the stewardship of natural resources, including introduction to lakes, forest forensics, Michigan birding, and introduction to orienteering. That's just a handful of our programs. And you're very aware of our partnership with the Roscommon Gypsy Moths or Spongy Moth Suppression Program. MSU Extensions created a new page within our website that has information for individual homeowners and property owners and how they can understand the life cycle of that pest, natural controls that may be occurring in the ecosystem. If this wet weather continues or frequency of rain, it's very helpful for some of those natural controls, as well as ways that they can protect their own trees and property from defoliation. And MSU Extension continues to offer support to homeowners through our lawn and garden hotline, which is a toll-free phone resource for a broad array of lawn and garden questions. And as we know, in 2021, many questions focused on Lemantria Dispar or spongy moth. But we often offer help for people on a lot of other lawn and garden questions. So encourage anyone who's here in the room or anyone who's listening to look for that toll-free phone number to call. Everything from what is this spot on my maple tree to why won't this patch in my lawn? Come back to how do I grow great and beautiful dahlias every summer? And so MSU Extension continues to help people improve their lives by bringing the vast knowledge and resources of the university directly to individuals, communities, and businesses. And I'm very proud that my staff is here with me. Elaine and Rebecca are joining via Zoom today remotely. And then we have John Worm, Ian Sawyer, who's my district supporter, Julie Crick, who's a natural resources educator. And I'm sorry, I didn't mention that John is our 4H program coordinator. And then a new staff member who just started on Monday is Emily Barber. And she's working on something called MVP, which is our Michigan Vaccination Program. That's a grant funded program that is working to connect individuals and work with community partners like health departments and others, help people understand the importance of immunization and vaccination in overall health. It's not necessarily focused on the COVID vaccine, but just in general, how vaccinations have helped community residents to thrive. So she's just getting started. We're really trying to get the gears moving in the right direction with her this week. So a lot of like, are you connected to this yet? Are you connected to that yet? But so she is here, happy to take any of your questions. If you have any of those for me, stop talking so you can do that.
Questions, anybody? Number one, congratulations on your new position. And Elaine, thank you for the snack. I need to get myself another cup of coffee to enjoy that with. And I did it. One thing I did notice in this flyer right here, supporting strong communities. You know, maybe I want to sign up for that anger and reduce stress deal after this last week, okay?
We have a lot of really great mindfulness programs. One of my favorite in this series is called Laughter and Mindfulness. And it really is an hour where you make the connection between finding those moments that bring you joy and laughter and humor in your day and how important that is for your overall health. And because I love the laugh, it was really funny. They make a lot of corny jokes throughout it, so.
Okay, sounds good. I may sign up for that one. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Worked out great, I tell you. MSU Extension's done a great job for us. Which I'll make another comment because it would be great to get that into a full-time program. And we can do that with a restoration knowledge. So I'd like, I'm pushing that restoration knowledge on something that's very needed. So I mean, this is another aspect that we can use. All right, number three, Superior Power and Solar Energy. Ted Curry, Ted, come on up. Introduce yourself and push the green button there first though, all right? Red button into green. And put it right in front of you. There you go. Can you hear me? I can hear you.
I used to be.
Speak louder.
I used to be a teacher and a PE teacher. So I have a gym voice and it should carry. And sometimes I need to separate myself a little bit from the mic. But I appreciate being here, taking the opportunity to talk to me. Brenda and Jody and Rebecca, we've met previously. And there was some thought that it might be a good idea to have this conversation. My name is Ted Curry. I represent Superior Power. Superior Power does community, municipal, and industrial scale solar projects. We do development, we do a wide range of services, everything from EPC, which is Engineering Procurement and Construction as a Service for multiple clients, including public utilities, universities, and communities. We also own, operate, manage, and maintain a small portfolio of projects ourself. And then we partner with communities to do development. And with our really overreaching goal is to deploy state-of-the-art technologies to help stable economic development through sustainable ways, right? We looked in, as we kind of come online in Michigan, I'm from Michigan. I was born in Flint. I've got property here in Roscommon County. And it's been a little bit difficult historically to get interconnection agreements in Michigan. There's transmission and streets. There's a lot of technical reasons for that. But Michigan's really starting to come online. We want to be a part of that. We look at opportunities in Roscommon County and we look at them as in our full range. From EPCs as a service, would Roscommon County be interested in doing a project? And then we look at community-wide projects. I brought a couple of handouts and I don't want to spend a lot of time on them, but I will point to them for people who may not be familiar with the potential of solar. There's a handout for Why Go Solar? It touches on a lot of the basic stuff and it talks about the reduction of utilities, income generating assets that are, and the tax benefits right now, especially to businesses. These are just some high points, right, of the opportunities. And then the economics for commercial solar. When you look at a typical 150 kilowatt project, and what you see on that page is about 150 kilowatts in general. You know, you're looking at a six to nine-year payback, double-digit returns. And right now, leveraging capital, the cost of capital is low for a lot of these projects, especially for underserved communities, low-income housing, those types of things, and in some cases, municipal projects. There's a funding source in Michigan, it's called Michigan Saves. They give preferred rates for debt for municipalities. I had a call yesterday with one of their primary lenders. It's called Inclusive Prosperity Capital. They have very good terms that allow not only good interest rates for debt, but the amateurization of that debt can be over 25 years. So your cash flow positive oftentimes right off the bat from the, once the project is commissioned. These are just some high-level looks, right, at what the opportunities are now through solar in Michigan. And then there's solar plus storage, which is, there's three levels that we really look at as a developer. There's the PV or the solar, right? And then there's solar plus storage. I tend to use acronyms. It's SSM, solar plus storage. And then there's the Energy Management Systems, EMS. The energy management systems are becoming highly sophisticated. The opportunity to integrate artificial intelligence into your load side management. That coupled with the storage is creating real new opportunities. And there's a lot of potential opportunity there. So I'm giving you just a broad stroke of the industry, the technology that we're trying to help bring online, a little bit about who we are. There's an additional handout there. But we've done projects, again, ranging from EPC as a service to integrating projects throughout a whole community. We did a community project in Blind River where we did projects on all the municipal buildings. We did all the residential homes that were interested in participating in the program. And then we added a megawatt scale project at their industrial park. Those are the types of projects that make a lot of sense now. When I talked about interconnection limitations previously, until very recently, it was not that easy to connect behind the meter in Michigan or in other jurisdictions. And when you can connect behind the meter, it's called, there's a bit of a democratization of energy here now because now you can consume. It's the right way to do solar. The technology's been around to do this the right way. But the appetite, the industrial or the institutional support and the commercial readiness haven't all been there, but it's really coming together. There's a need. We are well-aligned with our supply chain. Some of that will be indicated, and so I don't want to repeat a lot of stuff. But my partner, if you get a chance to take a look at who Dennis and who he is and what he represents for us and for other communities, and then our supply chain, the strength of our supply chain, we're vertically integrated. We have a very close relationship with North American-made panel manufacturer, Helene. I've known Martine since there was no Helene. My partner is a principal in that company. And so we have a pretty much guaranteed access to panels, North American-made panels, which will become a problem as you look at large-scale development over the coming months, really, and especially years, depending on how some of the tariffs play out, things like that. So we've done projects as small as two and a half kilowatts on a garage, right, back in the day. And we've done projects as big as 10 megawatts. We've done them for municipalities, for public utilities. One of our first commercial projects was 150 kilowatts on a water treatment plant for the public utility. We've done a lot of government, public-private partnerships. We did a project on a building for Elgoma University where the public utility leased the roof. And then the off-taker for the energy was actually the Ontario government. So and as you look at the types of projects and partnerships that we've got experience with and to a certain degree, our depth, our vertical integration with the supply chain and key components, our relationship with funders. We like to look at all projects as what can be done and then what would we like to do, right? I spent a little time with the help of Brenda and Jody and your facilities manager looking. Initially, because a lot of times the first step is a low-hanging fruit. Listen, let's just do a project. There's lots of ways to do projects. And roof-mounted projects on municipal buildings are good projects. There's a funding program called PPAs. I don't know, a lot of people aren't familiar, it's power purchase agreements, where we have funding sources that will come in and own, operate, and maintain the project and offer a power purchase agreement to the county where you buy that power from the owner of the development, right? They like municipal projects because they're secure, right? And so we look at that, we look at all. But when we took a quick look at most of the county-owned buildings, the roofs need repair or replace. So there's not an immediate project there, right? We don't see the opportunity to say, hey, look, let's just do this and we'll evolve. We'll discuss, we'll develop a committee, right? And look at the overall opportunity for developing solar in what I think is a real potential in Roscommon County, like out of the industrial park. We've done some industrial parks. It draws a lot of attention. So somewhere between, we just help each other. I make you, I help to bring awareness to the council that you can take out into your community to talk to your commercial businesses in the community about what the opportunities are. Just they're there. Doing a project that someone else funds stabilizes your energy cost, is coming from a green source, adds resiliency to the transmission grid, brings some notoriety and publicity. To a point, to the other end of the spectrum where we've done this and are doing this with a community in Ontario, right now a First Nations community, where they're becoming the power company. Ann Arbor is trying to do something like that. So we can look at the opportunity for maybe the county to develop a project at the industrial site where the Lear would be the off-taker. They would buy the power rather than us come in, put it on your roof and you buy it from us. The county could partner with us. The county could look at really good potential funding to do a project like that and then get into a power purchase agreement with Lear. And then that power purchase agreement with other industry, with other partners at the industrial park as they come online. There's ways that that's interesting. And I know with Lear, that's a corporate goal, right, to partner. And if the county's not interested in becoming involved at that level, which makes sense. I understand it. It's not your core. Most people don't understand energy. You start to talk about the county becoming an energy company and selling power. Oftentimes they're like, it's just not our strength. But we can bring that part of the relationship. Where if you look at our portfolio and then you look at the depth of our balance, potential balance sheet and the funding partners that we can bring, there's a lot of ways to put these things together. So that's who we are, a broad stroke of what we've done, what we can do, what we're trying to do in this community and others in Michigan. And when it comes right down to what's the ask? I guess really what I'd like to do is confirm the status of the roof, see if there's a standardized or a timed plan for replacement of those roofs. And then maybe put together an indicative proposal related to a project like that so you can see what it looks like. Then ideally, what we've done in other communities, and it seems to really work well, is look at the potential for an MOU where we would outline just how would, in a sign-up point person or a couple of people that could work with us to take a comprehensive look at the Roscommon County community, things like the industrial park and other options, to see what's there. So I guess that's really where I'm at and I'd take questions.
Presentation, sir. I'm going to take my direction from Ms. Valentino, from Mr. Chairman, from Andrew. That's where I'm going to look for, for direction to move forward on this project. Thanks for being here today, sir.
We've spoken, but I have not.
Well, Andrew's in charge of the mic.
I got to turn on my mic. We have been contacted by the DNR some proposed DNR solar sites. And the one they're looking at is out by the county airport, but this would be a separate deal. What you're talking about, what you're talking about is something that you could possibly partner with us to help us lower our energy costs.
I'd like to, I think there's a real potential for that and I think it's worth a look. One of the things about the bigger projects, we just started when I was, we were looking, we as a company looked at brownfield sites to develop. We were looking for brownfield sites in Roscommon County. And they're there, but the transmission capacity doesn't seem to be there. So when I look at the consumer's energy map to see where large projects can come online because of the transmission constraints as an initial look, we didn't go beyond that. But there weren't, there was no capacity in Roscommon County. So I wondered about that, it seemed a little odd. And the projects you're talking about may be related to that. I don't know yet whether or not capacity's been allocated to those projects that would limit other large projects to get access to the grid.
Or do I? We've just been contacted. So I was actually the point of contact on it. And I believe Commissioner Melvin was also contacted on it. So I guess this being the first presentation, Ted, I would have you keep in contact with Bill with what's going on. And I know Bill's got the expertise to look into this thing. And if it comes to proutation, hey, great, we'll see what we can do. Next thing is, of course, it always comes down to the money.
There's funding available. Yeah, there's funding available, and through Michigan Saves, you're looking at loans around 5% that you can amortize over 20 years, which oftentimes will have an initial positive cash flow. So you're cash flow positive from the beginning, and then you're using green energy. So that's just a general conceptual look at what's potential there. Now, when you look at the potential for non-county-owned buildings, for example, low-income housing, if your housing commission has low-income housing, or underserved communities and those types of housing opportunities, there's, the potential for even funding is, you know, almost 2% amortized for 20 to 25 years. So it depends on the circumstances and what the projects are, but we have a lot of funding partners, and some of them are private capital partners that are in it for the returns, and some of them are private capital partners that have social conscience, for example, the one I mentioned earlier, with Inclusive Prosperity Capital. They are focused on underserved communities and ways to create economic development for those communities through the, through the implementation of green projects. And so then that, and extending that out then to the commercial community, there's funding for commercial projects as well. It seemed to make sense. If the economics aren't there, I'm not here. Do you guys do residential homes? We do residential homes almost always as part of a community project. Rarely do we do residential projects as the end user, as a client. We, when I say rarely, I have one right now. We will, we do have a subcontractor that we work with to accommodate the residential market. We've done this, we, you know, this residential project I'm working on, I spend more time on a residential project than I do most commercial projects. The cost per watt to install makes the economics difficult. And there's, to be frank, the aesthetics and the handling and the different stakeholders involved, you know, we've done them, there's a place for them, it's not our focus, but we can accommodate residential stuff.
All right, well, good. I know I got Bill Sutton back there, and Bill and I did not discuss this ahead of time, but I'm hoping he's in agreement to keep an eye on this thing and keep his ears open, correct?
Other than Ross.
Okay.
I'm looking at the lot behind people's attention. I believe it's 300 by 300. Us forward, just getting into it, so the power over to our station, our substation. I want to get you within it. More than looking forward.
Okay. Great. I have to say, another reason, I said the economics didn't work, I wouldn't be here. If there wasn't, if we weren't welcome, we wouldn't be here either. We, you know, Brenda, the Economic Development Committee, and then Laurie was quite accommodating as far as, and showed some real interest, and so there seems to be interest. I've said this, this will be my last thing I'll leave you with, more important than the site is the client. We can look and find lots of good solar sites, but if you're dealing with a difficult client, it's not worth it, right? It's just not. So the client is as important to the site as the site to us, and we're hope, we look forward to work with.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ted. Item number four, resolution opposing Michigan Bill 4729 through 4732. Michelle Stevenson is here and do a little follow-up on last month's, or last meeting's presentation and to move forward with motion number two in regards to that, okay?
Thank you. Treasurer Reagan was unable to be here today, so I'm just, yes, kind of, sort of. At the last meeting, we did present you with a sample resolution, and then almost that afternoon or the next day, we received a copy of a resolution adopted in Menominee County, and the wording of that seemed to be more appealing, and I'm in Rebecca's, Secretary Reagan's opinion. So that's the resolution that we're actually brought to you and are asking you to consider, and we did make sure that we included Secretary, Secretary of State Benson per Commissioner Milburn's request. And then, as you can see at the bottom in the last paragraph of the resolution, it also increases the number of legislative individuals that will receive a copy of the resolution. So is there any questions or any, anything that you have regarding this?
No, but just, just for the other commissioners in your packet, it's going to say motion number three, it actually should say motion number two, okay? You might want to make that.
No, we got, mine says motion.
I want to make sure you've got the right resolution, so it would be the one that's marked number three, that should be number two. Everybody, everybody got that? Okay. All right. The only comment I had, so we're in support of it, so. Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Item five, Board of Commissioners canvassers appointment.
I presented you, so as you're aware, earlier this year, you appointed Dr. Hanson to the Roscommon County Board of Canvassers as a Republican Party representative, and Dr. Hanson chose to file as a candidate for county commissioner position, and I had informed him at the time, when he came to talk to me before, that if he filed as a candidate, he could no longer serve on the Board of Canvassers. So he filed as a candidate, so therefore he is no longer able to serve on the Board of Canvassers. So I reached out to Mr. Wall to request recommendations for someone to fill that vacancy, and they provided me with Kathy Pardo as their selection. And then we reached out to Mrs. Pardo, and she provided a letter which is also attached to the email from Mr. Wall. So if you choose to appoint her, I would ask that you do that at the next meeting. If you wish for me to try to get more names, I will do my best, but it's not the easiest thing to do.
Is this a temporary appointment?
Uh, no.
For term.
I don't know.
The reason I say that, the reason I say that is because with Dr. Hanson falling out, but his name is still on the ballot after the election, and could he be put back on? So in other words, could this be temporary until that happens, or I'm just throwing it out there?
I would both say that would have to be at your discretion on that. I know that he has indicated that he no longer wishes to obtain that position, however, draw by the withdrawal deadline for candidates, so his name is on the ballot. So you just never know what could happen. He could get elected, he could get, he could win the nomination, you know, it's, there's too many factors that are things unknowns.
I know. Personally, I'd like to see, I'd like to see if we got any other choices, more than just one.
Okay.
I mean, I'm very contained with Mr. Wall's suggestion.
So it's entirely up to you, however you want me to proceed, that's what I will do.
How soon do you have to have this position filled?
Well, ideally, we would like it before the August election, so that way we have four members of the Board of Canvassers.
You got basically two months to come up with somebody to put into this office, and right now we've got a name of a person that wants to do it, correct?
Correct. Jody is one of the members of the Board of Canvassers, so I think if you allow her, she'd like.
That was, my only question, Michelle, is I know that there are rules, like if I am a candidate, but what if I am an active campaigner or a candidate? Does that?
I don't really, I.
There isn't a rule that says you can't if you're an active campaigner. That's all I'm saying. I know you cannot if you are on the ballot, so, okay, that's all.
And Mr. Wall's the chairman of the Republican Party for the county, and if Mr. Wall feels this is, this individual meets requirements, and it is somewhat time-sensitive, as Clerk Stevenson pointed out, you know, we've got an election coming up in just a couple of months. I feel very comfortable, Mr. Chairman, if this appointment is awarded. I don't have any personal bias in regard to Ms. Pardo. Bottom line is, it has been recommended by our chairman of the Republican Party to point this individual, and I think we should, we should strongly consider that request as an approval. It's my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, like I said, we got, he recommended her, and she said that she would take the job. Like I said, it's only two months out. At least we got nobody, we know we got somebody that will fill the position. Somewhere down the road, we need to do it again, we can do it again.
What are you guys telling me?
Pardo, Mr. Chairman, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Bring that forward to the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, Propose Wagner-Pizer Act staffing rule, did I just say that right? Would you like to come up, Brenda, and kind of enlighten us what's going on? Because first I knew about this was Thursday morning of last week, and I know there's a public survey out there, I found out, which I thought was just something that chairman could make out with permission from the board, but apparently we all can, anybody can make this thing out. So explain, explain the federal part and the state part, because I was confused on that, and you straightened me out yesterday, yeah.
This is coming down through the pipeline through the Department of Labor. There we go, put it in front of me. This is coming down the pipeline from the Department of Labor. There are three states in the U.S. that do not operate the employment services with merit-based staff, Massachusetts, Colorado, and Michigan. So what they are proposing is to eliminate funding to the Michigan Works one-stop centers, the Wagner-Pizer funding, and replace staff, merit-based staff, which would be state employees in those positions to assist employers and job seekers and kind of disassemble our one-stop model that we've been operating with since Governor Engler has put that in place back in, I believe, the 90s. Yeah, it's been a long time. So the public comment period is open for this. It's open through June 21st. And so at our EDC meeting, we discussed the timeline, and Catherine Mathner, our board chair, has drafted a resolution, so we could get that to our legislators showing or non-support for changing this rule. So I know I spoke with Mark Burdán, our executive director, a week ago. They've been, you know, beating the drum and talking with the legislators. It is a portion of the funding that we receive from the federal government, so it would affect certain staff at our service centers, but you would no longer be able to walk into a Michigan Works office and get assistance with your unemployment. Granted, we were only able to provide minimal assistance, but there would be no one there. They're proposing for our region, which is an 11-county region, one person that would assist with unemployment issues or folks that walked into the service centers. So, so that's kind of where we're at right now. I know I shared some information with Bob via email. There's a link, anyone that has utilized Michigan Works services is able to go in and put on public, you know, put in their public comment, but at this point, we were asking for a resolution from the Board of Commissioners regarding the Wagner-Pizer Act and the proposed changes that may be implemented. Yeah, the merit, merit staff would be state employees working for the Unemployment Insurance Could be, yeah. We don't really know what their, their design is for it, other than what Mr. Burdán told me is there would be one person for our entire 11-county region.
The biggest problem with Michigan, wasn't with Michigan Works, with UIA. Well, my wife and my son both had some problems with UIA, and I'll tell you something, we reached out to Michigan Works, and we got their help, and they got it fixed for us. So, and the way I understand this, here we are in Roscommon County, we have very limited broadband, and that's what this is going to become, it's going to become a broad-based internet system, and they're going to expect people to go online. Well, we don't have, we don't have that capability, and even if we did, I don't know if everybody's capable of getting on there and doing this themselves. So I'm personally, I'm supportive of sending out a resolution in regards to this. It just seems like you find out about this stuff, and then you got to make a comment on it, and you don't even know anything about it. Well, then you got to get yourself schooled in it to figure out what's going on, but the government doesn't tell us.
A lot of people think that the employees at the Michigan Works Service Centers throughout the state of Michigan are state, were state employees, and we're not. We're contracted. So I work for Region 7B out of Harrison, Michigan. We cover six counties, and there's similar agreements throughout the state, so we receive various funding. During the pandemic, because of the situation with the increased number of claims and issues, the Michigan, some Michigan Works employees stepped up and assisted the UIA through that process. Usually, we have very little access, so that access has been taken away, which we only did that because of the pandemic. So really, the Wagner-Pizer is when someone comes in to file their unemployment and they need to register for work. That's our piece with unemployment at this point. We don't have access to their records, we can't fix any issues, which is fine. I mean, that's how it was before the pandemic, but we did step up. So we were that link to UIA for those folks, and what they're proposing is to have their own staff in place, which appears to be one person for our region.
And the good part was, this is, Sue Brenda, she put us in contact with this particular lady, and she actually ended up helping my son, who actually is in the Grand Rapids area.
Right.
So, you know, he wasn't even in the 11-county area, but you know what? Brenda told me that this gal was so good at it, she got promoted.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Area manager.
Anyway, she straightened, she straightened my wife's out with a couple of phone calls, and it was taken care of. Took my son a little longer, but she walked me through it. So it worked out great. So I think the support from Michigan Works has been there in the past, and I think we should support it, so I'm open for conversation in regards to this. Personally, I'm going to take the survey online, and then are we interested in doing a resolution to support for it? Okay. And I might like to customize it a little bit and add in there about our county broadband being lacking also.
Sure.
We might, you know, make it work the way we want it to work, okay?
Thank you.
All righty? Okay, thank you. Well, I got two other things on here, or I can bring up Vance now, it doesn't make any difference to me.
No, Vance.
Vance can be pretty quick if you got something, I didn't know that.
Oh, he doesn't have anything, but something I wanted to bring up, and I want him at the front table.
Okay.
What is the topic for, in court, please?
Oh, the Brook fire. I'm sorry. I seen him sitting back there, and we have a couple of minutes. Vance, I'd like to thank your agency, along with the Sheriff's Department, Roscommon County Mini Bus, the sheriff, a fire EMS on that Brook fire, emergency management, and whoever else I'm missing. You even came in, I heard you on the radio, I even communicated with you, and I just want to thank everybody in the county. Want to add anything to it?
Oh, we met, the fire chiefs met one of the regular meetings Monday, and I know they're, Pete Williams discussing having an, what's called an after-action meeting, sit down what worked, what didn't work, what can do better. Just the type of event that never happens here, like a F3 tornado, and I think a lot of goods actually don't come from this. The overall operation went very well, dispatchers did very well, and, yeah, it was.
It's amazing the dispatchers for the amount of departments calling in service, requests, consumers, and all that, and how con- requests, consumers and all that, and how calm they were, and you jumped in, and I'm very impressed.
Appreciate it. Yeah, it's, we worked very well as a team. Curly was assisting Emergency Management on scene, and I came in and helped the team here. And we had additional, not from the dispatch perspective, but I know people and other departments were ready to respond if needed. So, yeah, it was a good response.
Were quite a few departments there.
Yeah, forget the count, but Beaver Creek was on scene.
Yes.
So, very well.
And I can, I can do a piggyback. We were down there playing baseball. The baseball field is on West Sea, police posts, and a bunch of us hopped in our cars. We helped get the folks out of the entrance over to the end. Julie Brown was really instrumental, and the township opened up the township offices, saved a lot, gave me a ton of water. We brought it over to the Fire Department, and it was a truly a community event. I mean, I, the sheriff was there. I mean, I saw, I mean, everybody was helping out. It was really truly a community event. Everybody was, because we were looking for a lady named, well, it's not important her name. We couldn't find her for a little bit, and then we found her behind the buildings, so we were excited about that. But everybody was saved, as I understand, so.
Truly disastrous it was. It might sound awkward. It was a best-case scenario, the way it all came together, and could have, could have been much worse, much, much worse. But the entire teams in this county stepped up, and it would need to be done.
Everybody did their part to make sure everybody was safe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. All right, that's so fine. That's fine. No problem. We'll work it in. I do have a couple of additionals. These all, this all happened after our agenda meeting, but I feel like they're pertinent to be addressed today. Commissioner on aging. We got notified, I believe it was Thursday. The information that I got was that they needed a, Commissioner on Aging needed a letter, but there wasn't anything in the letter stating when the deadline was. I'm by no means to Vice Chair Russo and myself. We, I found out Friday morning that we had to have it by 1:00, this letter, by 1:00 back to Mary Frye, so she could submit that to, I believe it was Region 9, Alpena. But anyway, I did reach out to Commissioner Muckenthaler, Commissioner Milburn, Commissioner Russo, and myself, since we were all in the county, and I got the full okay from all of us to sign that letter of support. We got it faxed over with Julie's help. We got it all figured out. We had to tweak it a little bit, but we got everything. I think it was appropriate what we did. And with your permission, gentlemen, I sent that letter and signed it. So we do need to do a formal motion on that, which is going to be motion number three at our next meeting. So anybody else have anything on that? Okay. All right. Was time sensitive? Correct. Item number eight. This all went down, starting on Thursday afternoon, and then also on to Friday. Did everyone get the copies from the guess what's it called? The court system, State Court System? Okay. One was on the third, or third, I think it was on, I think the dates were the second and the third, whatever, third and the fourth, whatever they're stamped. But anyway, this is a short notice thing in regards to Juneteenth. There are, I don't know if Jody wants to weigh in on this. You want, might be to just give you the, give them the nuts and bolts of it, you and I.
Go for it.
Okay, anyway, well, you're gonna have, Judy and I have, Jordy and I had a good discussion on Monday on this and how we could possibly move forward with this thing. She did reach out to other controllers out, Administrator Controllers out there, and the consensus is, and one of the things that I, I think is the best thing to do is at this particular point that we honor Juneteenth this year.
Yes, sir.
And then at, at this particular time, so it's an additional holiday for 2022 only. And it can be addressed at a later time because you've got union contracts involved and other things and different other things that have to be looked at. So, and I think this should, and then that should be looked at, and probably should be looked at at the organizational meeting in the next year's board.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there's a motion on, motion number four with the addition. Everybody got a copy of that? Okay, I think we've got all the appropriate people included in there, so. Any further discussion on that, please? Mr. Milburn?
You know, I was excited to see this. This is, and I threw something together real quick when I saw this this morning. This is about honor, respect, equality, freedom, justice, and fulfillment of a promise made by President Lincoln, January 1, 1863. And I'm delighted to see this on, on our agenda. As you all know, I'm sure, this, this was passed by the Senate unanimously last year, and I think 14 representatives failed to vote in favor of this. It was signed by President Biden, and I'm delighted to see this on the, on the agenda today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other comments from anybody? You're not running, and I'm not running, so I don't need to make a comment, do we? Okay. All right, with that. 10:00 after?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, adjourn until 10:10. County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting, June 8, 2022, 10:00 AM, hybrid meeting, accessible in person or via Zoom. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Milburn, would you lead us to the pledge, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Michelle, item number three, roll call of board members, please.
Muckenthaler.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Melvin. Russo.
Here.
Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda. Now, let me get to the motions here, please. Motion one, number one is numbered correctly. Motion number two needs to be changed from three to two. Only change on that. And then we have an addition, addition of number three in regards to supportive, supportive of the letter to Commission on Aging Grant Application. And number four, roll, motion number four, move to authorize Juneteenth to the Roscommon County as a paid holiday.
With the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to amend the agenda and approve it as such. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing? None? Roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Uh, Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number five, approval of the minutes for the meetings, regular meeting, 5/11/2022 and 5/25/2022.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the minutes of 5/11/22 and 5/25/22. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing? None? Roll call.
Oh, Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number six, Class A Claims and Accounts, please. Michelle, Class As.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of $509,379.33.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to approve Class As in the amount of $509,379.33. Any further comments or many commissioners on regards to Class As? Hearing or seeing? None? Roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, Claims and Accounts, please, Michelle.
Move to approve Claims and Accounts in the amount of $83,369.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Milburn to okay Claims and Amounts of Claims and Accounts in the amount of $83,369. Any comments from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing? None? Roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item number seven. At this point, we've got a USDA grant in regards to 911. Vance Strangl is going to come up here. We need to have a motion to go out of a regular meeting and into a public hearing for the USDA grant report.
So, oh, I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
A motion made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Milburn to go into public comment in regards to the USDA grant report. Go ahead, Vance.
Okay, um, yep.
Vote, excuse me. Me bad. Any further comments? Roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Okay, Vance.
Okay. So there's no change since I spoke at the last work session. This public hearing is the opportunity for the public to have input and question, what have you, on the grant that I've written. The and we, overall, this is a required part of the process. I provided you some information, just kind of refreshing what I've covered before on where the money would be spent. The overall grant, well, the project would be $125,811. And you can see the breakdown on the sheet I handed you. The one unknown so far is previously there was a $50,000 cap from this grant. And because of the last couple of years, that money hadn't been used due to the pandemic, the USDA is going to try and move that up. So if granted, well, we would receive $69,100, and Central Dispatch would contribute $56,711. And if for some reason they could not or did not raise that cap for the year, their contribution would be 78, excuse me, $75,811. And both of those numbers are in my budget, so we're sitting good for that. This is important and necessary equipment. If you'd like, I can cover each of those again. The equipment, you got it.
Already presented this to us once before, so.
I'm good, Vance.
Okay. So from there, that is what I have. Questions from the public? Questions in common?
Hey, that's what we're looking for right now, is as we are in public comments. If there's any public like to comment on this USDA equipment grant. Good thing, or you're going to need a motion on this next time.
Uh, yeah, so we, I will let them know that the public comment has come through. They will need a copy of the minutes from this meeting as soon as possible. Once those are available, I'll provide that to them, and then their next step has to take place, so.
Okay. Well, I just, I just wondered how time sensitive this was.
We have some time.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to see the minutes before they take their next step, so.
Well, good, because it seems like most of the stuff that's been coming across my desk needs to be done yesterday. All right. Okay. Anybody else? Any questions for Vance?
It could be you and your team.
Okay. All right, now I need a motion to come out of public hearing and go back into our regular meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
No, second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to come out of public meeting, go back into our regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Vance. Item number eight, public comment, agenda items only. Do you have anybody out there that has any questions in, or questions in regards to anything that's on the correspondence? Please, this is your time. Okay, nobody out there in Zoom land? Okay, thanks for keeping me posted on Zoom land. I almost forget that. Okay, item nine, Administrator Controller Report.
Good to miss me. I'm back. Hi, guys.
We're glad to have you back.
Um, just quick, for most of our lawsuits, the Kurtz versus Roscommon County Treasurer, that's still the one in regards to the statewide suit in regards to the tax foreclosure sales. That is no change in status. Chill versus Roscommon County is still waiting for Supreme Court, so there's no change in that. Sheriff and myself will be attending the mediation on June 29th for Mock versus Roscommon County et al. This one has been ongoing for several years, so we'll, we'll see where the mediation leads us. Ostrigan versus Snyder and the Roscommon County Board of Commissioner is no change. Ostrigan versus Snyder, no change is waiting the court to determine whether or not the appeal will be heard. Ostrigan et al. versus Melvin. They request for show cause was under the 1982 original order. Because of that, the courts have issued an order denying the movement's ex parte order for the show cause, and have instead requested that the plaintiff schedule a hearing status conference. As soon as we have that information or that date, I will let those that must be present know. And it will be a must be present for a couple of people. So I, as soon as I have that information, I will let you know. It has been submitted to insurance. It always takes them about a week or so to get back to me and let me know whether or not it will be covered. But as soon as I know, I will let you know. And no current change in the opioid suits. Interesting piece of legislation was in, was introduced last week that would allow for counties with populations under 75,000 to adopt the elected positions as nonpartisan. You wouldn't have to run as Democrat, Republican, et cetera. And it is for clerk, treasurer, registrar of deeds, prosecutor, sheriff, drain commissioner, and road commissions. So, sorry, commissioners still have to run. Couple.
We're exempt, huh?
You know, those four-year terms now, so they want to make sure people know where you stand. Just a couple of quick updates from when I've been back, so that I can get you in the loop, too. Obviously, our aerial treatment for the spongy gypsies moss in Roscommon County was completed, and the rain is assisting in bringing out that lovely natural bacteria that makes them do that cool U thing when they die. So, knock on wood. That this is, this is a good year this year. I did reach out to Lieutenant Back when I get back and let her know that she should proceed, begin moving forward with the processes that are needed to create that hydrogel kitchen program that we're hopefully going to be able to afford. That would allow us to oversee and manage our own kitchen staff. However, the majority, the compliance, the ordering, those types of things, inventorying, would be done by a knowledgeable third party. She is creating a job description for the proposed positions right now. Those will go to the Wage and Salary Committee for review and placement. Then at that point, it will be presented to our regional POAM and COAMs for review of whether or not it fits within the realms of a union or non-union position. Once we get that, then we'll have a true cost assessment and be able to really bring everything to the Board of Commissioners for a decision. So I did begin reviewing an option of offering early retirement to our defined benefit members as a potential long-term cost savings in those areas. As you know, we made those changes with approval about three years ago with the unions to have a new, new employees essentially over there are moving with longer vesting and more contributions. That in and of itself is funded over at 100%. So ideally, the more you can move that forward, the better your long-term cost savings are. Unfortunately, because we are only funded at 70%, it is not an option that we can offer through MERS. We need about $3.7 million to bring us up to 90% funded to offer something like that. Finally, there were, happened conversations with the county members and the representatives for Northern Michigan Community Mental Health. Thank you to UnderSheriff Lowe, who stepped in for me last week when I was with my dad. But there are an additional meeting scheduled moving forward in which the Commissioners, Chairman specifically, has been invited to attend with Administrator Controllers to review improving relationships and processes and financials. So that is all I have.
Okay. All right. Any questions to Jody, please, in regards to her report?
To help out anyway, Kim, Mr. Chair, and Miss Valentino, add any input I could, because I think it's very, very important that we stay on top of that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Nope. Okay, administer, okay, item 10, Correspondence. Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority was also in regards to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority, uh, was also in regards to, uh, what's going on with Erin and Jody, your information on mental health will be happening on the twenty-seventh of this month in Cadillac. Um, item B, NACO Policy Resolutions Platform Changes for the Annual Conference. Item C, Corps of Engineers Public Project, uh, that's in regards to, uh, Detroit District Public Notice in regards to the Menominee River Navit- Navit- Gitable Navability Study. Isn't that in the U.P.? Okay, well, we got notified on it, so, all right. Item D is Michigan Associations of County Legislative Update, and this is a question on that for myself. Maybe Vance can answer it. Vance is gone. There you are, there you are. There's a first responders where Ross Common County got sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, did you see that? Did anybody else see that?
I'm familiar with that particular one, I do know. Program. Cover all the two hundred dollars.
Well, this is, uh, Public Safety, it's under, um, Michigan Associations of Counties, five twenty-two, thirteen counties are among recipients of the First Responder Training and Recruitment Grant Program to Michigan. Huh? Okay. Right.
Are they rejoining for next year?
Possibly, I, uh...
Anyway, we got sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, so that'll be going into the nine-one-one.
How does that, sixty-seven thousand go to nine-one-one?
Was to be provided on training?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, I just noticed that we got mentioned in there, we got some money, so.
It's like, immersive. Before that money go back. That's what we got.
Okay. Um, item E is Menominee County Resolution, that's the one that we're gonna, we'll be voting on that Michelle presented earlier at the work session. F is NACO, uh, five twenty-five update. G is Michigan Association of Counties, twenty-five twenty-seven legislative update. And number eleven is the State of Michigan, or State of Department of Treasury Final Ecoization Report, so. Um, any questions from any commissioners in this regards, in regards to correspondence? Any additional comments, I should say? Okay. Uh, under number eleven, MSU Extension Virtual Learning Program. I think everybody checked out from MSU, didn't they? Okay, now, item twelve, visitors, please. Tim. Yes, please. Come up and push the little red button there.
Hello, I'm Mont Green. Uh, good morning, everybody, just here, Tim Willorkin, introduce myself to all of you again as a candidate for county commission seat in district number two. Um, I wanted to just let you know, uh, and the public know that, uh, I have a lot of experience in county government, I've sat on committees for the county and road commission over the years, and I have experience in budgeting and, uh, contract negotiations, a lot of other things as the manager at the road commission. Um, I'm just here, I'm thrilled to take the shot at, uh, being able to serve the public. Uh, I'm a conservative fiscal person. Um, I think you spend money when you have to spend it, you hang on to money as, just like as a taxpayer, I told the road commission when I took over there and came out of the public sector after thirty-two years in the private sector, sorry. Um, I'm running asphalt businesses across Michigan, uh, and moved up here to do the same, uh, and then when the job came open at the road commission, I told people, I said, listen, I'm a, I've been a taxpayer for thirty-two years of my life and, and I'm gonna leave this job as a taxpayer as well, I'm gonna serve as a taxpayer, uh, so it was always my intent at the road commission to, uh, to advise the board on expending money only when they had to and on things that they had to spend money for the quality of life of the people in this county. Uh, so that's what I'm about, uh. Uh, I really hope that I can depend on some support from people on this board and the people in the public to support my candidacy. Um, and like I say, I'm, if I'm lucky enough to get through the process, the election process, uh, I look forward to serving on this board for a very long time. So. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Much better than road commission reports over the years, I know. Much better, yeah. Thank you very much for having me.
All right, good luck. All right, any other visitors this time? Later? Okay, thank you. All right, item number thirteen, unfinished or new business, any commissioner have any unfinished or new business? Okay, um, I do have one thing I want to bring up, um, I've been contacted by a gentleman from the DNR, Mark Borson. He's a, um, wildlife biologist, they're in the process of, uh, DNR is looking at a possible, possible acquisition of four hundred and eighty acres in Bacchus Township. I don't know if anybody that's in my district, so, um, we were at our, I was at the Bacchus Township Meeting and this, Mark made a presentation, I've been in contact with him, I've got a bunch of information here, but this particular piece is land-like, landlocked land, it's actually behind the township park of Bacchus Township. And it's only accessible through the township park and over state land, so individuals at the hunting club that owns this, there's nobody interested in basically using it anymore, so they've, they are in a process and negotiations to working with the DNR to have them acquire this land, and then it'll be open for walking paths and so forth, they're planning on developing and so forth. Uh, when I first looked at this, I got a little bit concerned because he included, uh, that the twenty-twenty-one tax rates on it was forty-two hundred dollars to the various, to the county and to the township and the schools, Golden Lake Schools primarily and Kirkland College and Liver- and the library. Uh, but in talking to this gentleman the other day, um, when the DNR acquires property, they still have to pay that taxable rate, and with the price that I found out that they're getting for it, that, that forty-two hundred dollars will be replaced and probably will be higher because what they've proved it for is more than what it's assessed for, so, um, there's not gonna be any loss of income to the township or the county, the last way it was explained to me, so. Um, down the road, there will be some public comment and so you'll see more information on that, but it's basically just one township that it affects, but it is all taxpayers' money.
I, I appreciate your, your diligence on that, I knew that first thing that you would bring up would be tax base, so thank you.
Yep.
It's important.
Well, when I was, when I was at the township meeting the other day, um, Eve DuBois was there from the transportation, so he's, he says, you know, he said Bob's the money guy. Cause that was the first question, so.
Sure.
All right, any other new or unfinished business from anybody? Okay. Motion, or number fourteen, item fourteen, motions and resolutions. Michelle, are you ready? You don't know.
Kind of.
Okay, motion number one, please.
Move to adopt resolution number two-zero-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-one, Houghton Lake lake level. Resolution number two-zero-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-one, Houghton Lake lake level. Whereas on March second, two thousand twenty-two, the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners passed resolution two-zero-two-two dash zero-three dash zero-one, which, among other things, authorized hiring legal counsel and engineers to amend the Ross Common County Circuit Court Order that established a normal lake level on Houghton Lake, lake level order, to establish a lake level special assessment district and confirm the district's boundaries, the MCL three-two-three point three-zero-seven-zero-seven subsection five. And whereas, under the delegated authority of the Ross Common County Administrator Controller, Attorney Controller, council and engineers for the county have continued to work on establishing the lake level special assessment district. And where, ensure stakeholder input and consensus, the county controller and the county's engineers and council held an informational stakeholder meeting on May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, related to the proposed lake level special assessment district with representatives from Denton, Ross Common, Lake and Markey Townships. And whereas, during the stakeholder meeting, various stakeholders referenced that community members may also have opinions on the proper normal level of Houghton Lake, which could require court action and further amendment of the lake level order. And whereas, the engineers and legal counsel retained by the county to amend the lake level order regarding establishing a lake level special assessment district for Houghton Lake, recommend that any actions to amend such an order related to Houghton Lake's normal level should occur after the process to establish the special assessment district, and any amendments to the normal level should be based on the results of the lake level study. Now therefore be it resolved, one, normal level. The Ross Common County Board of Commissioners directs the county controller and its retained legal counsel and engineers to complete such work and court proceedings to establish the Houghton Lake, lake level special assessment district and confirm its boundaries. Given stakeholder input, the Board of Commissioners authorizes the county controller and retained legal counsel and engineers to prepare a study and perform related activities to provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to whether to amend the normal level of Houghton Lake. Under such recommendation, the county shall not enter into court proceedings to amend the normal level of Houghton Lake, but may conduct authorized proceedings related to a lake level special assessment district. Two, cost of activities. All costs associated with the activities above, including retaining all necessary consultants, legal counsel and engineers, shall be reimbursed by a lake level special assessment district to the extent permitted by Michigan law.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion in a second on this, please.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Motion made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner McIntaler to adopt the resolution twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-one, Houghton Lake left, lake level. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Okay, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
McIntaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Okay. Motion number two, please.
Move to adopt resolution number two-zero-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-two, opposing Michigan House bills forty-seven twenty-nine, forty-seven thirty, forty-seven thirty-one and forty-seven thirty-two. Resolution number two-zero-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-two, opposing Michigan House bills forty-seven twenty-nine, forty-seven thirty, forty-seven thirty-one and forty-seven thirty-two. Whereas Zillow, a for-profit corporation from Seattle, Washington, has been lobbying the Michigan Legislature to pass legislation that undermines integrity of registers of deeds and treasurer offices across the state of Michigan. And whereas, the legislation that Zillow is lobbying for would require registers of deeds and treasurer offices across the state of Michigan to provide for-profit corporations copies of any official records maintained by those offices at a significant discount or in some instances free of any charge. As a result, the taxpayers will be responsible for picking up the tab for providing these records and the financial burden created by the loss of revenue for these offices. And whereas, if these bills become law, Zillow and other for-profit corporations will have the ability to demand the manner in which the register of deeds and treasurer's offices must provide copies of official records. And whereas, if these bills become law, they would impose new restrictions and limits on what registers of deeds and treasurer offices can charge for parcel cards and would burden Michigan taxpayers with the cost to provide records to out-of-state entities and corporate organizations. And whereas, Zillow and other corporations will capitalize on selling publicly owned records provided to them free of charge while at the same time placing Michigan residents at a higher risk for fraud and theft. And whereas, the Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Association of County Treasurers, Michigan Association of County Clerks, Michigan Association of Registers of Deeds and the Michigan Municipal League are united in opposing Michigan House bills forty-seven twenty-nine, forty-seven thirty, forty-seven thirty-one and forty-seven thirty-two. Therefore be it resolved that the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners oppose Michigan House bills forty-seven twenty-nine, forty-seven thirty, forty-seven thirty-one and forty-seven thirty-two, as private corporations should not benefit financially from public records at the expense of Michigan taxpayers. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, Speaker of the Michigan House of Representatives, Jason Wentworth, Majority Leader of the Michigan Senate, Senator Kurt VanderWahl, Representative Dare Runden, the Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Association of County Treasurers, Michigan Association of County Clerks, Michigan Association of Registers of Deeds and the Michigan Municipal League.
Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo, adopt resolution twenty-two-two dash six dash oh-two, opposing the Michigan House bills forty-seven twenty-nine, forty-seven thirty, forty-seven thirty-one and forty-seven thirty-two. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
McIntaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, thank you.
Motion number three, please.
Move to authorize Chairman Robert E. Snyder to submit on behalf of the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners a letter supporting the Ross Common County Commission on Aging's Grant Application Initiative.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion made by Commissioner McIntaler, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Snyder to submit on behalf of the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners a letter supporting the Ross Common County Commission on Aging's Grant Application. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
McIntaler.
Yes.
Motion number four, please.
Move to authorize the addition of Juneteenth to the Ross Common County two thousand twenty-two paid holiday calendar and authorize Controller Valentino to submit a letter of agreement to the POAM E-nine-one-one Union, POAM Sheriff's Union and COAM Sheriff's Union requesting agreement.
So, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to authorize the addition of Juneteenth to the Ross Common County two thousand twenty-two paid holiday calendar.
Let's go for COA.
Um, they're on their own because they do not fall under our umbrella, but when I send out, uh, if you approve the motion, when I send out notification, I will copy them so that they're aware of what we're doing.
Thank you.
And the other thing, this, this all was done with consultation with the Chief Judge, Judge Bennett, so he's, they're on board on, uh, on the court side, all right? Um, any further discussion? Roll call.
McIntaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. All right. Votions and resolutions, committee reports. Excuse me.
Yes, uh, I had claims and accounts.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Pretty quiet.
I'll be quick, EDC, District Health, and Tim, do we have animal control tomorrow night?
No, we have that on the sixteenth.
I, I, I stand corrected, Thursday.
Yeah, it'd be sixteenth.
Yeah, it'll be sixteen?
Yeah, we moved it back a week.
Oh, okay, I'm glad I asked, thank you.
Uh, can you go next and I get to find my report?
Okay. Yep, I can go next. Get to my place here. Uh, I had Health Department, uh, no, Mr. Milburn also had Health Department back on the twenty, back on the, on May twentieth, May twenty-fifth, excuse me. Um, so I'll cover for him, agenda meeting on the second. Um, I did spend a lot of time in the office on Thursday and then ended, unbeknownst, I got what I was over here on Friday, so got things squared away there. Did spend some, and I did make my township media at Bacchus Township, and I just talked about that land acquisition, so that's enough on that. Uh, that's all I got. How are you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
I had an agenda meeting, Houghton Lake Improvement Board, and I attended the airport flying, which it looked really successful when I was there with the people.
Yeah, tag on, I did the airport, too, about, probably by two o'clock, there was quite a few people still hanging around.
Awesome.
Good event, and obviously the credit goes to the airport EAA and, and to Eric, Eric.
Okay.
Do a fabulous job.
All right, okay. Got that on committee reports?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item sixteen, public comment. Come on up, come on up and identify yourself, turn the red button on to green and you're all ready to go, okay?
Okay, hi, uh, my name is Nathan Lane, I am a journalist with Reuters. Um, we and other media organizations reported earlier this week that, um, a third party was, uh, provided access to the, the voting equipment, uh, here in Ross Common County. So in addition to Ridgefield Township, uh, the- So in addition to Ridgefield Township, uh, there was also access provided, uh, to at least one tabulator, county's tabulator to an outside third, unauthorized third party. Just wondering if perhaps you, uh, Chairman Snyder or someone from the board could articulate um, what you know about what transpired and if you have any concerns about what transpired. Right? That sounds right.
I turned my mic on. Yeah, you and I had talked on the phone earlier. As far as I'm concerned, I, I don't know anything about this other than it is under state police investigation. That's all that I am fully aware of. Um, I haven't talked with anybody about it. Um, as far as a commissioner, I don't have any dealings with it, so I don't have any feelings one way or the other. I guess I'm waiting for the investigation to come out and see what's going on.
I see.
Okay.
Do you, do you anticipate having to purchase any new equipment, uh, because of this?
I can't answer that question, Nathan. Okay, I don't know. Like I say, I, I don't know what the extent of this investigation is gonna come out with.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public comment, additional public comment. Anybody out there? Is everybody in Zoom land? On once, on twice, on three times?
Go move, Mr. Chair.
I have seventeen adjournment. Mr. Milburn and comm- motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye. We have our next meeting.
We have eleven o'clock.